Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the regular meeting of the Zion City Council on this day of October 3rd. Madam Clerk, please call the rolls.
Commissioner Fisher?
Here.
Commissioner Holmes?
Here.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Here.
Commissioner McDowell?
Here.
Mayor McKinney?
Here. Item number three, Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Brimmer, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have Pastor Ken Langley from Christ Community Church here that's going to lead us in prayer. Pastor Langley, great to see you.
Thank you, sir. Two brief comments, if I may. One is an apology that I'm not staying. I have a son visiting from Africa who leaves tomorrow. I'd rather go visit him in case of your agenda. The other is from the Bible, and it's very brief, but I want to explain why I pray, one of the things that I pray. An early church leader wrote to a congregation in the first century urging the people to obey their leaders so that their work would be a joy and not a burden because that would be of no benefit to the congregation. Now, the words are directed mainly to the followers, but there's something implied there for leaders as well. Joyless, grumpy leadership is of no benefit to followers. That's why I'm going to pray for joy. And I'll start right there, Father, and ask that despite the challenges that any public servant faces, including those in this room, the elected officials and the other public servants, that despite those challenges and despite criticism and despite everything that might potentially sap them from joy and satisfaction in their work, I pray, and we all pray, I think, that you would give them joy in this stewardship that you have entrusted to them, help them to find good reason, to look at the right side wherever possible, to find good things happening alongside of things that they wish were different. And I pray that that sense of satisfaction and joy in their service would be contagious and that our community would be better for you. You lay before you tonight's agenda, whatever decisions have to be made, whatever deliberations and prayers that have all been done in a way that puts a smile on your face. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Langley, for those remarks. All right, time is now for citizens' comment.
Agenda changes.
Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry. I was distracted by Pastor Langley leaving. Didn't want to hear it. Agenda changes, are there any agenda changes? If not, is there a motion to accept the agenda as presented this evening? Motion by Fryerson? Second by Holmes. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Motion carries. Now, item five, citizens' comments. We only have one person signed up for citizens' comments this evening, and it is Mary Lou Hildebrandt, our fearless leader from ESDA.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and city council members. During the month of September, your ESDA volunteers paid $262 hours of service for a value to the city of $7,847. We supplied equipment to block the roads for the merge block parties, assisted with Labor Day parade, assisted the police with traffic for two accidents, and provided barricades for the celebration of life for City of Hope. We performed a monthly siren test and assisted with traffic for the monthly food pantry at New Tech parking lot. We had our monthly meeting as well as training and duty times for maintenance of our equipment in the ESDA Center and garage. We did planning for upcoming events such as Oktoberfest on October 26th and the Bar District Taylor tree on October 27th. We were happy to take three new members into the team and would welcome anyone wishing to help our city and its citizens. If you wish to volunteer, go to www.cityofzion.com and from the drop down menu select apply or contact ESDA, leave your information, and we will get an application to you. Thank you for your consent and continued support.
Thank you, Mary Lou. And it was nice to hear the siren again. I know that it's been under repair for quite some time. I've had a couple of citizens that have called and inquired about the siren, so it's nice to hear it going off today, the first Tuesday of every month.
10:00 AM.
Just tested, yes. So no alien invasions or anything like that. Item number six, consent agenda, 6A approval of minutes.
Approval of the regular meeting minutes held on September 19th, 2023 at 7:01 PM.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Motion by McDowell?
Second.
Second by Fryerson. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Motion carries five zip.
Item number six, B, bills, vouchers 144202 through 144329 drawn on Huntington National Bank in A, total $749,570.2.
Is there a motion to approve the bills?
I'll move to approve the bills.
Motion by Fisher?
Second.
Second by McDowell. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Motion carries five zip. Item number seven, consider passing resolution as follows. 7A, accepting the staffing for adequate fire and emergency response grant from the Federal Emergency Management Agency, also known as FEMA, U.S. Department of Homeland Security for the Fire Rescue Department per Chief Street.
Good evening, Mayor and commissioners. I'm very pleased to report that we have been awarded a grant through FEMA's Staffing for Adequate Fire and Emergency Response Program, also known as SAFER. The program guidance for this grant cycle offered 100% reimbursement, including salary and all benefits, for three years per firefighter requested. We applied for four positions in order to add one firefighter paramedic to each of our four shifts. We were notified on September 20th that our application was accepted as presented. I've attached the award package for your review, including the financial components that we will be able to submit for reimbursement. I recommend and request official city council acceptance of this grant. There will be a related request forthcoming regarding approval to pursue the next four names on our hiring list. We will also be working closely with FEMA grant manager assigned to us in order to appropriately follow the hiring period of performance timeframe details. Also, as an aside, a public thank you is deserved for Battalion Chief Eric Troy. He did a lion's share of work on this grant, including the important narratives, and he oversees all of our grant programs, and he's to be commended on this as well. So, thank you for your consideration.
Is there a motion to accepting the staffing request? Make that motion that we accept the SAFER grant? Motion by McDowell?
Second.
Second by Fryerson? Questions or comments from the council? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Motion carries five to zip. Item eight, consider passing ordinance as follows. 8A, authorizing a ground lease between Zion CSLC and the City of Zion BAP Power Corporation, DBA Synergy Power, per our city attorney, Jimmy Vazellini, who is filling in for Dave Nabel.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have been working with Synergy Power for a few years towards getting a community solar project on the old landfill site on 17th Street. They have been working diligently with the state to get approval of their project, and they have been successful, and they are now ready to move forward. The city initially granted an option and a special use permit with them to keep the site viable, and the specific lease was to follow as the next step, the state approval. Attached is a lease for the project. The monthly rent for the lease is $13,000, and the key to this project is placing the property back on the tax rolls and making use of a brownfield site for a viable use that will be of benefit and create clean energy for the residents of Lake County. So we look forward to and appreciate your affirmative approval of this lease.
Is there a motion to approve the lease?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Fisher?
Second.
Second by Holmes. Third by McDowell. Any questions or comments from the commissioners?
Do we have a timeline on when they might start construction, or is that even done yet?
I do not believe that there is a timeline in the lease for when they will start construction.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? All right, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Motion carries five zip. Item number nine, discussion, authorization, and approval. 9A, request permission to hire four firefighter paramedics and request the names of the next four qualified candidates from the Fire and Police Commission eligibility list, per Chief Street.
Well, thank you again, Mayor and commissioners. So based on the acceptance of the previously discussed FEMA SAFER grant, I am requesting approval to hire the next four appropriate candidates on our hiring list. All names from our hiring list have been released by the Fire and Police Commission at their September 25th meeting. Additionally, these potential hires and their corresponding start dates will be closely coordinated with our assigned FEMA grant manager in order to ensure the proper timeframe allowable through this grant program.
Is there a motion to request, for grant permission to hire the four firefighter paramedics? So moved. Motion by McDowell?
Second.
Second by Holmes. Questions or comments? My question, Chief Street, is where does that leave your staff in terms of staffing? Because for several years, our entire city has been operating kind of at a deficit with personnel. I know our police department now has full staff, so where does this leave the fire department and paramedics?
We're certainly in a lot better shape than we were years ago. And in terms of our full-time roster of staffing, this adds, like my motion before asked, this adds a full-time spot per shift, which is great. We're still heavily dependent on our part-time program to supplement staff, but this would have us at six full-time positions per shift for 25, including me, and actually seven, I misspoke, seven, which would be 28 shift personnel, which is great for the city. It's really going to be a big help to the city, so we're in really good shape with this.
Okay. It's great, and I mentioned that, and I asked that question because over the past several years, especially since the pandemic, it's been so difficult for fire and police departments all throughout the state, throughout the country, really, to be able to hire. There's been a shortage because of early retirements. And so it's been very nice that we've been able to round out our staff, so to speak, and that we have people that are interested in coming and working in our city.
Yeah, just to piggyback on that briefly, there's just not as many pursuing these jobs anymore. And those that are pursuing these jobs, it's a highly competitive market, and we quite often will do our testing cycle and end up with a list of 10 or 15 or 20 potential applicants, but by the time we have openings, they'll be hired somewhere else. So this is, again, just a great step to help us out in a lot of different ways.
Okay. Any additional questions? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Motion carries five zip. Item number 10, as departmental commentary, Director Ianson?
Thank you, Your Honor. Just a reminder, the residents are always still waste management, change their service pickup and alley to the front of the property. How long do they have to change recyclers every other week? I recommend anybody pick up the schedule in the lobby or if you get on the city's side outside, so that you don't have to have to recycle.
I know that we've had some little resistance to the change that we didn't dictate, and for the people that have called and asked about it, we've tried to explain that as we've talked to other waste management companies about their services, they told us the same thing, that they were going to move their services from picking up the garbage from the alleys to the streets because of the new equipment. And so most of the old equipment that these companies have, had, that could fit in the alleys, they no longer have, and they would definitely interfere with the power lines with the new equipment. So it's been a little bit of a transition for us. We're trying to do what we can to help some of the seniors, if they call. Can you address that, with calling the building department that might be having difficulties?
If they have disability, will they be able to take the hands out? Will they form a form if they feel like taking the doctor, you know, physician, the doctor? Have any special requests?
So that, we've had that information on our website, on cityofzion.com, and it's a big link to it up front with questions and answers, the most frequent questions and answers to this issue, but definitely call our building department. They'll make sure that you get a form to fill out if, in the event that you have any kind of disability that prevents you from taking your garbage from the alleyway to the highway.
The form can be phoned online, too.
It can be phoned online, too. All right. Chief Street?
All right. Well, good evening again, everybody. Thanks again for your support on our staffing initiatives. This really is a big deal for the city and our department. I didn't get a chance to mention it as we were going through this, but the value over the next three-plus years on this grant is over $2.1 million. So that will, that's a big deal for us, so thanks again. I have flyers, English and Spanish, for our open house this Saturday at our Station One, just across the street, 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM. We'll have demonstrations as well as food to hand out to our guests as well, so please make it a point to tell your family and friends about that and grab a couple flyers if you'd like. And the last thing, since you brought up the emergency sirens, I want to give one more update. They are working, with the exception of the one on the far west side at Ninth and Green Bay. We're still waiting the siren company that we use for maintenance to replace the parts of that one, but that should be done shortly. And we still are running into some signal problems from our dispatch center in Gurnee. When they press their button to activate the sirens, for some reason, it doesn't always get to all of our siren sites, but we are able to follow that up with the signal from our Station One, so we do have siren coverage in the case of emergency, but it just takes a little bit of coordination with our dispatch center. So, still a work in progress, but we're almost there.
And Chief, when you talk about in case emergency, I see we have some new residents in here at the meeting this evening. Could you talk about the Blackboard Connect program, which is another way that we reach out to residents in the event there is an emergency within the city?
Absolutely. We would love for all of our residents and guests as well to sign up for Blackboard Connect, which is a way that we can broadcast a message either through an email, text message, or phone call, or if you choose, would prefer to receive it, with urgent messages, or sometimes outreach messages, going back to the COVID days and stuff like that. So that's the way we can quickly broadcast a message to everybody. Real easy to sign up. There's a link right on the cityofzion.com homepage on the left-hand side called Blackboard Connect, but we're always available to help sign anybody up that might not be super computer savvy. We'll be happy to help. So always good to remind our residents and visitors that please sign up for that.
Yeah, and we don't send out a lot of information on that just in case of emergencies. Several years ago with the pandemic, we did send messages out to our residents because we were helping our residents here in Lake County to be able to get COVID vaccine shots, and that was a very productive way for us to reach a lot of our residents. Also, tomorrow, for all of you that have cell phones, I'm sure everybody does, there's going to be a nationwide siren alarm testing program tomorrow that has been publicized, I think, on the news, of course, if you follow the news on the internet. So don't be alarmed on your phone. It'll go for a minute. You usually hear it on your television, but now it's coming to cell phones, and so many people use cell phones now. So that's going to happen tomorrow, I think, 10 o'clock Central Standard Time?
I heard 1:00 or something.
1:00? It'll be 10:00 somewhere.
Yeah, I think it's going to be a range. It'll happen in that range somewhere, depending on where you are.
Yeah, okay. All right. Chief Barton, and Chief Street, again, we had an event last week that I'll talk about. We had a ribbon-cutting ceremony for a new company that moved their headquarters, company headquarters, from Gurnee to Zion, and I was going through all of our staff members that were there, and I stood right next to Chief Street and forgot to mention his name as I was talking about employees. I felt very embarrassed about it and offered my apologies to you, which I...
It's quite okay. You don't even need to mention it, but thank you.
All right. The fire department had to come out to my house last, was it last summer I was cooking, which was a mistake? And it set off my alarm. I let something, left something in the oven way too long, and my smoke detector and the alarm system went off in my house, and I was trying to open the windows, pull off the smoke detector so they didn't come to the house. The next thing you know, there's the fire engine, there's the ambulance out there, and that was quite embarrassing.
But don't worry, our crews are still talking about that.
All right. Chief Barton?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Couple things just to highlight. We've got Zion Community Meeting on October 25th at the high school from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM. I urge everyone to pop in and listen to what's going on. There's a lot of discussion that the community leaders would like to present and continue the conversation. Is this probably the...
It's got to be like the seventh or eighth one.
I would say it's been a bunch, so it's been a good program. It's been working. So I'd like to see you all there to make it. Just as a reminder, you might be driving around and seeing a lot of sidewalks are getting torn up and replaced right now, so we, there's parking that's become an issue for people getting into their driveways, being able to cross the sidewalks and all that. So be courteous to our neighbors. They may have to park on the street. There's, those locations have been flagged, so there's no parking on the street citations that will be issued during that time. And if you do get one accidentally, please bring it in, and we'll take care of that. And just as a backup, this grant that Chief Street just got is a big deal. We've both been working hard on finding extra monies in the city or for the city. He's being modest about it. Congratulations, that's a big win. Combined, I don't know, we've probably reached over $5 million in grants received in the last year for both our departments, and we've been really striving to hit hard on those, and we've been finding some real good solutions with some of that grant funding. So congratulations, it'd be nice to see your folks on there. And also, he's been having to navigate the waters of no recording secretary for the border fire and police right now, so that was some challenges I know he had to deal with and work through, but that's worked. Thanks.
Chief Barton, just a couple of questions. You talked about the parking with the sidewalks. If there's any issues with our residents and they have to park on the street for some reason, whether you're getting your driveway done or something, call the police department and let them know, because there's no overnight parking in the City of Zion, and it's been that way, I think, as long as I've lived here. And some people, I can see that in your eyes, Commissioner McDowell, you saying? I was here when the city was founded in 1904, yeah. But just call the police department and let them know, and that avoids any prospect of getting a ticket. So just communicate with our officers or anyone in our, anyone within the city if there's an issue that you're having. Was that it, Chief?
Well, I'm not, Ray's not here to make fun of your age, but you are. But I can't.
Yeah, you already did. All right. We have our finance director here this evening.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. First, I just want to say, speaking of age, happy birthday to Director Nabel. Oh, wait, he's not here. So, happy birthday to David. Second, like a month ago, we talked about doing budget to actuals, getting you guys something. I've been pulled off of that because we've been working with the State Comptroller's Office on some issues with audits and filings and stuff like that. That stuff has all been taken care of, has gotten to the auditors, so now I can shift my focus back to where it needed to be, and we'll get you something here in the next couple of weeks.
You weren't finished, were you? All right. Chris Conway has joined us. How long have you been with us now?
Since January.
Since January, and at one point Administrator Nabel was doing both jobs, and he was doing the job as a city administrator and the finance director, and since we bifurcated that position, it's given him more time to focus on our financial planning in the future, and she's been a great addition to the City of Zion. So thank you for the work that you're doing and working with our commissioners and working on the budget items that we've been talking about, getting these things, talked about actuals for quite some time now. So thank you. It's nice to have the employee power to do things. Yes. Commissioner McDowell, any comments?
Yeah, I just want to piggyback on what Chief Street said about B.C. Troy and his grant writing. Grant writing is really a specialty, and it takes quite a bit of effort to figure out exactly what foundations, and in this case FEMA, really are looking for. And this grant was received on its merits. It wasn't guided through by any corporation that wrote the grant for us. It was done by Eric Troy, and he did a great job to secure that $2.1 million for the city. And he's also written another grant for a truck that's in line, and hopefully we'll get that one as well. So just congratulations for Eric and great job that he did in writing that grant. For the last three years, I think, the Zion Historical Society has had a walk-through time, and it's a tour of some of the unique historical sites in our city. That tour is going to be on Sunday, October 8th, from 1:00 to 4:00. And if you go to the Shile House, you can buy a ticket. You can buy a ticket in advance if you go to the Facebook page of the Zion Historical Society to get the information, or you can just show up anywhere between 1:00 to 4:00 PM. So it will go around the city to various sites and end up at Mount Olivet. And at Mount Olivet, there are some distinguished individuals that are buried out there, and they're going to come alive in a lots of time. Yeah, I know, you're surprised about that. They're going to come alive. You'll see them out there. And including my own grandfather, I guess that's why I'm promoting it a little bit, who is buried out there, who was a former commissioner in the City of Zion. He's going to appear and tell us a little bit about his life, as well as others. There's some mayors that are buried out there, some city council members that are buried out there, distinguished citizens. So if you are interested in hearing some of their stories, join the tour and see some of the sites around Zion, go through the graveyard, and you'll hear some stories from those that are buried out there.
All right. That's when I put my hand on my heart.
Okay, so I am going to be impersonating my grandfather. All right? That's how it's going to work.
Okay. Well, my mom's out there, so I'll impersonate her. I've had enough of that. Anything else, Commissioner McNally?
Um, I think that's it.
All right. And Mr. Fryerson?
I'll echo the congratulations to the chief. I know that was an extensive amount of work, so congratulations on that coming through.
Thank you.
To those residents that are interested and take their flu vaccines, the library partnering with Roslyn Franklin University Health Clinics will be doing free flu vaccines tomorrow at the library between 1:30 and 6:30 PM. So that is a walk-in event. As the Coalition for Healthy Communities will also be there conducting our survey for whole-person wellness that we've been conducting over the last several weeks. Our unit of study is per household, and we are paying surveyors $20 for taking the survey. It should take anywhere between, I'd say, 20 to 45 minutes to complete the survey. We'll have... We'll have Chromebook setup where you can take it on your own. Or we'll also have people on-site who can conduct it as an interview style, if you prefer. And then also, there's a job fair at the library on October 18th. And I believe that will be from 1:00 to 3:00 PM. So just some of the things that we've been partnering with other organizations around town to bring services to the community. So just an FYI, if you're available, come on out.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner? Commissioner Holmes?
Yeah, I just wanted to piggyback on a comment that Chief Barton mentioned in terms of the community meeting coming up on the 26th. I understand there will be follow-up discussion from the various governing, Zion's governing bodies for, talk about potential use of the grant funds for the SEJA grant. So for those who want to hear the discussion and/or some of the follow-up suggestions that remain, come on out.
Yeah, and the SEJA Act is the Clean Energy Jobs Act. We've talked about this the last couple of city council meetings. We still have spent a few rides down on our lakefront from the plant. And we've been working with the federal government to try to get money for being a storage facility, about $15 million a year, what we're owed over, since it closed down in 1998. And in the meantime, we found a way to work through the state of Illinois and with Exelon to be able to get that money for a 23-year period that we have to split that money up between the respective taxing bodies. So it's been a lot of work. Our city administrator, Dave Nabel, and I and our council members, along with some of our state reps, really worked hard to get us that money. Our community was severely damaged economically when that happened. And we're still working with the federal government to give us that $15 million as part of the 1982 Nuclear Waste Act. So I've been to DC several times to meet with the Department of Energy, the Secretary of the Department of Energy, and talk to everyone else. So we're still pursuing that in spite of getting this money, which has helped, will help our city tremendously in so many different ways. And that is October 25th for that community event. And I encourage everyone here, you probably should have received something in the mail, a postcard about it. The community event, while we share with our residents what we've been doing, a lot of that stemmed from questions that our community members have asked us over the last probably two or three years that we've been doing this. And so if you want to have some input into the city and know what's going on with all the taxing bodies, which includes the high school, the elementary school, the library, the Park District, Police Department, Fire Department, and the city itself, you get a chance to meet all the civic leaders that are there in one room and bring up any of your items of concern during those meetings. And we follow up on them so that we make sure that all of the items that are brought to our attention by our citizens are addressed. And what I've found in most cases is that we have been addressing those issues prior to those being brought up. But if there's anything that, anytime you want to call us and ask us what's going on in the city or what our processes are, these are really good meetings to attend. And that's October 25th at Zion Benton High School. And is it in the evening again, Chief?
6:00 PM to 8:00.
6:00 PM to 8:00 PM. You can get there for 5:30 for refreshments. Commissioner Fisher?
I had to think about it for a second. Fall is here. And I'm just going to mention one thing that everybody's going to be talking about for the next five to six weeks. The leaves will begin to fall. And so collecting those leaves, we still have a leaf vacuum program with waste management for this fall. This will be the last time that we do it. So please, you know, when the schedule gets posted to the city website and the leaves start to fall, rake your leaves to the front easement, not into the street. Please don't clog up the street with piles of leaves. And the leaf vacuum will start doing its routes. Do we have a date yet, or have you heard?
I have those schedules up, but I don't know if it's...
Yeah, I don't know the date offhand, but it'll be in the next few weeks. The other thing is, is that with the leaf program going away after this year, waste management under the contract will still pick up leaves. They are bagged. And also, if you have branches, you can get those picked up along with your other yard waste as long as they are bundled with twine 18 inches round and no more than four feet long. So just give everybody, because I know that's going to be the topic of conversation for the next few weeks, is people saying, when are my leaves going to get picked up? And what do I do with them? So just get ready. Fall's here.
Good point. One thing to add to that about the waste collection pickup. So it is past October 1st, so you are now able to call Waste Management if you would like to replace your recycle bin with the larger one. So they're, you know, doing that at no charge. But you had to wait until after October 1st to make that call. So we're at that point now.
Does that include a new garbage can, too, if residents call?
Yes.
If your garbage can is in bad condition, you can go on their website and call them and request a new garbage can as well.
Correct.
But because the recycling, excuse, yeah, the recycling program is every other week now, you can, you are eligible, as Commissioner Frierson alluded to, to be able to get a larger recycling bin. All right, good point. I'll just go through things real quickly with my commentary. As you can see, there's a lot of things happening within our city. October 7th, the open house at the fire department was always one of the highlights when I was a young kid in town wanting to get on the fire trucks and meet the mascot and learn about fire techniques and fire safety. That's a great event. I was fascinated by the Jaws of Life presentation that extracts people from car accidents. Pretty powerful when you realize that our female firefighters and paramedics have to be able to lift those, and they're very heavy. And they've got to be in great shape to do it. So that's a big event. The next night, the next day, the walk-through time. I'm still a little wary about walking through cemeteries.
Come out there and see what it's like.
And then October 17th, at 6:00, we have a Zion, there's a Zion Township Boardship, Zion Township Board meeting, excuse me. And at 7:00 on the 17th, we have another city council meeting. And on the 18th, there was an event from 1:00 to 3:00. That's the Job Fair. Yes, I was writing notes about that. So make sure that, and that's at the Zion Park District?
Library.
At the library. I'm just checking new facts to make sure I got that straight. And then on the 25th, the community event, which I mentioned at the high school, it's a nice event to be able to, and we've gotten a lot of great participation and feedback from our residents on what we can do to continue to make our community a great place to live. And then on October 26th, the fun event, Oktoberfest, which happens from 5:00 to 8:00 on Jethro and Salem Boulevard, right across the street from West School. Last year was the first year for it. A lot of us attended it. It was a great event to be able to go. I always wanted to go on a hayride. And somehow, when I was growing up, I always got left from the hayride. So it was good to get on a hayride last year. They had food out there. They had fire pits so you could keep warm. But it's a nice community event that's been put on by one of our residents, Beverly Stackhouse, who works at the elementary school. So that is a great event. And then on October 27th, we have the Trail of Treats at Shiloh Park from 4:00 PM to 6:00 PM. If you come out to that, you can drive your car through Shiloh Park. We started doing this during the pandemic. And you get candies from all the different organizations that are within the City of Zion and West River Harbor Beach Park that participate. And you'll see a lot of our commissioners dressed in costumes, which is always a fun event to bring out the kid and all of us. That's October 27th, 4:00 PM to 6:00 PM. The Halloween Trails of Treats, and that is sponsored by the Zion Park District. And it's a great event. You see the park light lit up. The Park District does a great job with that event. And we've had huge success with it and good weather, thank goodness, except for two years ago. And on the 29th, in Zion, from 2:00 PM to 5:00 PM, Zion Trick or Treating. So if you want to participate in trick or treating, you can leave your light on. I put orange lights in my house and put those on to let people know that you're involved in trick or treating. And it's nice to see all the yards decorated throughout town that people get into the Halloween spirit, which maybe ought to make that walk-through time on Halloween.
It's obviously already scary enough, I was going to say. So I think we'll just leave it there.
So with that, those are all the announcements. I just want to thank everyone for coming out again to our city council meeting. Again, if there's any issues that you have within our city, you can look on our website to know who that you have to call. Mike McDowell is our Commissioner of Fire and Safety. Commissioner Frierson is our Commissioner of Building Zoning. I'm trying to get all of the acronyms there. Commissioner Fisher is the mayor pro temp, and he is also the Commissioner of Finance. And my stunt double, when I'm not able to attend events. And Jackson Holmes, of course, is our Commissioner of our Water Department, Public Works. And our city fraternity, James LaSalle, in the house tonight. So with that, we have item number 12. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion by Frierson, second by Holmes. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes? Commissioner Frierson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you for coming. Drive safely and have a good rest of the...